Well, good afternoon, everyone. I see that you're all seated, so I won't ask you to take your seats. But I will ask you to please silence your phones and your mobile devices during the ceremony. And I'd also like to thank the Vancouver Fire and Rescue Service Band for playing while everyone entered the theatre and found their seats. Yes. Thank you, everyone, again, for joining us today for the inauguration of Vancouver's newly-elected mayor and city councillors. I'm Raymond Louis. Some of you may know me. I am honoured to be here and delighted to be asked by Mayor-elect Sim to be your emcee for today as part of today's historic occasion. We are honoured to be holding this ceremony on the unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh nations, and we thank them for having cared for this land since time immemorial. At this point, I'd like to introduce the individuals onstage with me today. We have representatives of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh nations, councillor Alison Fraser of the Musqueam Indian Band. We have Kasealem, chairperson of the Squamish Nation. We have councillor Dennis Swanick of the Tsleil-Waututh First Nations. And we have the Honourable Judge Derek Ma, BC Provincial Court. You can't see them very well, but we also have with us today Deacon Richard Chow, representing the Archbishop Michael Miller and Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Vancouver. Reverend Beth Hayward, Lead Minister, Canadian Memorial United Church. Rabbi Dan Moskovich, the senior rabbi of Temple Shalom. Head Guaranty Gianni Harminder-Palsing of Kosovoan Society. And we have Tariq Tayab, Muslim community representative, Aljamia, Masjid, Vancouver and BC Muslim Association. Just a few notes about today's event. First, please keep the aisles clear for the procession. Our official procession will be piped in shortly, followed by the singing of our national anthem. After that, we will hear remarks from the representatives of the three local nations and from the five religious leaders. Following these remarks, we will hear from the mayor-elect, councillors, and the mayor... We will... Following these remarks, mayor-elect, councillors and elected councillors-elect will take the oath of office. To conclude, mayor-elect Sim will deliver his inaugural address, followed by the ceremony. We invite all of you to stay for late refreshments and meet our newly-elected mayor and councillors. Once again, I'd like to remind you to silence all your mobile devices and phones at this time. Now, please join me in welcoming the official procession, our mayor-elect, councillors and councillor-elect, led by Piper Major Cal Davis and Departmental Sergeant Major Ray Gardner, members of the Vancouver Fire and Rescue Services and the Vancouver Police Department Honour Guard. Please rise if you are able as the official procession enters the room. And I'll ask that you remain standing for the singing of Canada's National Anthem, which will be performed by Andy Greenwood of the Vancouver Fire and Rescue Services Band, accompanied by Vancouver Fire Rescue Services Band.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us common. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, Andy, and the Vancouver Fire and Rescue Band. I ask everyone to take their seats now, please. And now I welcome the three leaders of the local First Nations to say a few words.
Hello, my name is Alison Fraser. My traditional name is Thothal Maltea. I'm honoured to bring greetings today on behalf of the Musqueam Indian Band and welcome you all to the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh people. Since time immemorial, our people have lived in and around the area now known as the city of Vancouver. We now occupy 0.2% of the land that we traditionally used. Because of colonisation and the expansion of the city, the Musqueam people were forced onto a small reservation in South Vancouver next to the mouth of the Fraser River. Today, the majority of our members continue to call our small reservation home. Because of the location of our community, the Musqueam people have a unique and longstanding relationship with the city of Vancouver. Although it may be getting better, how we were viewed by the city was not always with a great deal of respect. For many generations, our people were strangers in our land. In fact, the only people that lived with us for many decades were Chinese immigrants that worked on vegetable farms that were constructed throughout our reservation. One of those Chinese farmers, Gordon Hong, fell in love with my grandmother, Agnes Grant. I stand upon the shoulders of both these people, two people from opposite sides of the world that were treated horribly by governments in this country, including the municipal governments of the day. They were tremendously resilient people that put up with so much in order to protect their cultures, and without them, I would not be standing here talking to all of you as equals. Knowing how my grandfather was treated as a third-class citizen throughout his time in Vancouver, I have no doubt he is smiling down on us as we inaugurate the mayor of Chinese descent in the history of Vancouver. It is for this reason and so many more that today I stand before you, a proud member of Musqueam and a proud Chinese-Canadian. Over the past number of years, our relationship with the city has begun to improve, but there is so much more work to be done. Our kids are educated in schools within Vancouver. Our city services agreement allows us to be served by Vancouver Police, firefighters and various other services. We have been working hard with previous councils to allow for greater recognition of Musqueam people, culture and history throughout the city of Vancouver. Recently, worked collaboratively with the city to finally rename Truch Street, Joseph Truch was a man that looked at indigenous people as nuisances and savages. His name should never be adorned on any street sign in this city. We are so happy that the city has worked with us to rename the street, and soon the street will be renamed Musqueam View. To this new council, we are pleased that our relationship has started to be repaired, but that is all it is, a start. We look to you to continue the important work of reconciliation throughout this city. We are not just your constituents, we are the original title holders of this land, and we must work together to acknowledge this and put it into practice. The work you are doing on undrip implementation is a start to recognising this, but there are years of work ahead for us all. The Musqueam chief and council look forward to working collaboratively with you over the next four years and know that we can do so much positive work on behalf of all the people that call Vancouver home. Congratulations to you, Miss Mayor Sim, and all the councillors. Heights Apka.
(Speaks in Pasqueagaw) (Speaks in Pasqueagaw) (Speaks in Pasqueagaw) (Speaks in Pasqueagaw) So I said hello. Actually, I said more than hello, but... I wanted to welcome each and every one of you in one of the two languages from this land that we now call Vancouver. And I'm very honoured, from the bottom of my heart, to be on this stage with my relatives from Chumatsquiam and Tsleil-Waututh. Our three communities or our three families have extensive ties and ancestries, connections, cultural values, history, heritage that connects us, that we are distinct peoples, but we also have an interwoven history together, a history that stretches back through generations and continues on this today, in the way that our families from our three families, our three communities are interconnected and how we're related to each other and how our families continue to maintain that tradition of our families coming together throughout the generations. This territory that we're here on today, as was mentioned by my esteemed colleague, is the territory of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh. I am a Skopmish. I come from the Skopmish people and I am an elected chairperson for my council. I'm very honoured to be here to welcome you to our territories for the fact that for generations, thousands of years, our people in our towns and our villages, our large extended communities, where there was once thousands of people living in multi-family dwellings that had ways and systems of protecting and taking care of their communities, that for generations our people would invite and welcome guests, other nations, other communities, somewhere as far as 300 to 400 to 500 miles or kilometres north or south from here, and invite them to this territory when there was big gatherings that would happen. Often, in the harvest season was over around September, October, canoes would travel from many distances to be here to visit with our people, and that's where a lot of the alliances and relationships and connections through all the different indigenous peoples of the North West Coast would come together. But for generations, our people have been inviting and welcoming people into this territory. And that tradition would start with an invitation that would go out and an invitation that would be responded to, and people would show up in their canoe and they would arrive by water and there would be somebody there to greet them. The families or the community itself would have people that they would hire there at the water, whether it was on the ocean or in the river, ready to greet people as they came in. And people would come ashore and they would ask for permission before putting their canoe onto land when they were entering the village, and they would ask for permission to come ashore, asking for that free prior and informed consent to enter into the territory, to explain their intentions about why they were coming and what they were hoping to accomplish. And often it was a celebration, it was to rekindle connections, perhaps kinship ties that had once existed between the families, but also they would come bearing gifts to support the celebrations and the accomplishments that are being recognised by the community. Some of the places around Vancouver are noted in our history for places where major gatherings, what we call pa'atches, are big times, as our old people would say. Iowmuk, the village at Jericho Beach, was once a large thriving village where there was a gathering of thousands of people who had arrived by canoe in the late 1800s. Huaihuai, our village at Lumberman's Arch, again, huge longhouses that measured 900 feet by 300 feet wide with over 11 families living in there, where they would host these large gatherings. A number of other places throughout the territory where they would welcome people. But it all started with that respect that was shown by acknowledging that this territory belonged to our people, that we had a distinct, unique history and connection to this land, but also that we had inherent rights to this land, that it belonged to us, and everybody had a sense and they knew that what was theirs and what belonged to somebody else. And what's very unique and fascinating about the history of our communities and what, you know, we've had to do to survive and thrive against the onslaught of brutal policies that harmed, starting with our children, and harmed our elders in terms of the cultural destruction that was attempted by our people, is that despite it all, we've become very resilient people, but we also have maintained a connection to our ancestors because we feel that there is something that they had and that they did that still has value for us today. And it's the reason why we use our language and we use our songs and we practise our ways as much as we can and ensure as best as we can that the next generation will have access to those things as well. But we continue this work with open hearts and open minds to work with other governments based off mutual respect and a positive relationship to achieve mutual benefits that can bring a betterment to all of our communities. And I'm proud to say that there is a significant amount of work that our nations here in Vancouver have been able to accomplish with the city of Vancouver over successive governments, that the issue of reconciliation and indigenous rights is not a partisan issue, that it's a human rights issue, that our human rights as indigenous people, as articulated in the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, or our rights that are enshrined in Section 35 of the Canadian Constitution and the Charter of Rights and Freedoms are built into the foundation of Canada, and that Canada would be a far more interesting and better place for everybody when indigenous rights are upheld, respected and enjoyed fully by indigenous people. And so I'm very honoured to be here to welcome you for this historic occasion to think about the future of this city and the things that we can accomplish together, the things that can happen when people with smart minds and open hearts, who care deeply about the city, can come together to find common ground and to create opportunity and also protection and support for those who need it. And so I think a lot about those who... Thank you. I think about all of you who have taken the time out of your day to be here for this historic occasion. I'm also thinking about all the people who are outside, who need our help and our assistance and our aid, who need our determination to find the solutions for the things that impact us all, that we can't be in this just for ourselves, but that it's about the how well our neighbours are doing as much as it is our own households. There's a teaching in our culture that poverty and to be poor was not... and to be rich, we're not seen in the way that we see them in a Western sense. To have an abundance of wealth is not how we would historically see a wealthy person. A wealthy person was somebody who had something to give and distribute it to their friends and their family. And it was considered to be poor and pitiful to have things and to keep them when somebody needed it and to not offer that aid or assistance. And so to be generous and to be kind and to be caring were true virtues of our ancestors that we try to emulate as best as we can to this day. And we know that there is gargantuan challenges and problems that we face as a society, but it's very important to recognise that here in Vancouver, there is actually 10 separate governments with overlapping jurisdiction, which is a fancy way of saying responsibility, to tackle the issues of our day. And so I'm very excited and very honoured to be able to be here for this historic occasion to usher in a new era of the city hall and of this council with this wonderful new council here, to be able to work together on the issues of our time and to be able to solve them for the betterment of everybody. And I look forward to the years ahead. I have a very positive outlook about what can be accomplished because I know that at the heart of this work, there is so many people who have mutual respect and a positive outlook to what can be accomplished by working with the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh people, and I know that is shared by so many in this city and in this room. And so I raise my hands to each and every one of you for this opportunity, your time and attention, and to the days and years ahead and the many wonderful things that we're all going to accomplish together. Tomat kweitsi kuiis necham oseam.
(Speaks in Pasqueagaw) In translation, I just wanted to welcome each and every one of you, respected peoples, to the traditional lands of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh peoples. Swanick is my ancestral name and I come from the Tsleil-Waututh nation, and it gives me good feelings inside to have the opportunity to share a few words on this stage and to welcome each and every one of you. My English name is Dennis Thomas. I'm an elected council member from the Tsleil-Waututh nation. I'm here on behalf of our Chief, Skalat Tala, Chief Jen Thomas, and also a colleague, peer of mine, Simtala Charlene Alec, who is also elected council in the audience here today, to extend our warm greetings and gratitude to Mayor-elect Ken Sim, the councillors and also the councillor-elect. Congratulations to you all. Thank you. I've been on my first term with the Tsleil-Waututh nation council for just over a year now, but working within my nation in economic development and really want to pay respect to our past leaders that have really fought so hard to be at the tables that we're at right now, given with some of the histories leading up to today. And, you know, I can't, I'd be remiss without saying that times were different back then for our people, and it's about our leadership and people that are in this audience and the mayor and the council members that have really taken huge strides in building a stronger social, cultural and economic fabric for Vancouver. It's been a pleasure sitting on a few different committees. committees, especially the Undrip Task Force. And I really look forward to seeing the milestones that we're going to be creating that really enhance and elevate the beautiful city we call Vancouver. I strongly believe the, the mayor and councillors and the host nations and the relationship to our multiculturalism in Vancouver is the best in the world. The strides that have been taken right now regarding reconciliation, but fostering equity, diversity, and inclusion is really starting to be showcased provincially, nationally, and I think globally, especially just with the Undrip a few weeks ago. I want to conclude, well, first, I just really like to honor my relatives from the Musqueam, Allison, and Kalsalem for saying the beautiful stories and, and the, the message of today. So thank you. I also really want to honor this moment and this occasion with our anthem song. It was composed by Chief Dan George, who was an advocate and a philosopher and a prophet in a way of how one day, you know, 60 years ago, we might see our own people at these discussion tables. And here we are today at those tables. And this is also known as the prayer song. And I brought this, the shape was a paddle, because one of our mythologies and our philosophies is paddling together as one. A hichotol naht samat, paddling together as one heart with one heart and one mind. And I believe we're all in this canoe together and the city of Vancouver is also in this canoe. So I found it very fitting to bring a little mini canoe paddle. But this is our anthem song.
Thank you to councillor Fraser Kalsalem and councillor Wanik for those words. I'd now like to invite our five religious leaders from the community to say a few words.
Mother Teresa of Calcutta once said, "If we pray, we believe. If we believe, we love. And if we love, we will serve." As people who are blessed to serve others in the diverse communities in the city of Vancouver, I ask you now to pray with us. Glory in Excelsis Deo. Glory to God in the highest.
Ground of our being.
The source of all life.
We all belong to Wahiguru, Lord, and all victories are in his name.
Assalamualaikum. Peace and blessings upon you all, especially our Indigenous brothers, sisters, and friends in the audience, upon whose unceded land we are gathered.
You desire a close and intimate relationship with us so that we can approach you, the Almighty, and say, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And it has not needed temptation, but deliver us from evil."
Light and love gathered here on the cusp of something new. May the spirit of possibility lure these leaders to creative possibilities. May these elected ones be rooted deeply in wisdom that draws them beyond easy solutions to complex challenges and instead embraces the full spectrum of possibilities born when a multiplicity of voices are heard, where all are invited to the table. May we discover ways to support those we elect in embracing visions bigger than that which lurks in the shadows of our fear.
Guardian of all life, awaken the spirit of love, peace, and friendship among all the inhabitants of our city. Purify our hearts from any hatred and enmity, any jealousy or prejudice. Plant wisdom and virtue in the hearts of our leaders, and may they govern with justice and compassion, so that our city remains true to its values and stands as a strong model for others. Keep us alert to the care of our natural resources and help us appreciate the plurality of Canadian ways of living and our many paths towards
Our guru, Guru Granth Sahib says, "If you try to give something back to the community with hard work, love, and compassion, only then you are able to feel oneness with God." This is the time Mayor Sim and his councillors face the challenges. We all come together and support them. Khalsa Dwan Society, Vancouver, the oldest Sikh temple in North America, and the Sikh community stands ready to support you.
It is an honor to be here with you today as a member of the Muslim community, to share our best wishes and hopes for our new city government.
The scripture says what God said to his people through the prophet Mika 2,700 years ago. What does the Lord require of you? To act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with him.
As we select few gathered to bless and empower these elected leaders, we pray that justice, mercy, and humility might inform their decisions. May each one in this room remember that our wellbeing is tied up with that of our neighbors in this city and that we are only as strong as our most marginalized citizens.
The Torah instructs us in the words of the prophet Jeremiah, "With our shoe et shalom ha'ir," seek the peace of the city and pray unto God for it. And yet we also know, as Judaism teaches, that the purpose of our prayer is not to motivate God to work on our behalf, but to motivate us to work on God's behalf, to be partners with God in the ongoing work of Tikun Olam, the repair of the world.
Guru Granth Sahib has 35 contributors. Only six are Sikh gurus and rest of the contributors are from different faiths. This is the way Guru teaches us how to coexist in multicultural society. Major, Mayor Sim is the first ever Chinese Canadian mayor in Vancouver, and this is the beauty of cultural diversity in Canada.
For 1,444 years, Muslims have centered their lives around the first words of the Quran, the opening chapter, Al-Fatiha, "Bismillahirrahmanirrahim," in the name of God, the most compassionate I'll praise this dear Allah, Lord of the worlds, the most compassionate and the especially merciful. Lord of the Day of Judgment, it is you alone we worship and you alone we ask for help. Guide us to the straight path, the path of those upon you have bestowed favor, not on those who have evoked your anger or those who are astray.
God, you love the world through us. May you bless our mayor and city councillors in working together for the good of the city and grant our civil servant dedication to discharge their public duties, especially to the elderly, the vulnerable, and the marginalized with dignity and respect. Rest your hands upon those at whom you have chosen, who will draw strength from you. We humbly ask for your blessing on our city as it embarks upon a new direction to seek to provide safety, peace, and prosperity for the good of all.
Holy One, as these leaders step up in a time of climate crisis and poison drug supply, affordability and a housing crisis, and an ever-deepening divide between rich and poor, may we be empowered to hold them in our care and to hold them accountable. May we encourage their conviction to pursue justice for all. And may they be guided by the truth that all citizens require enough to live and thrive, to make meaning, and to contribute to their community. May they and we be cautious in the face of immediate yet thin rewards of following where fear leads.
May it be your will, Adonai, our God, to grant the mayor, our city councillors, and all who dwell here, a new vision for safety and prosperity, for friendship and cooperation, so that we may all, so that all who live and work and learn and serve in this community may know the fullness of your blessings, in a city overflowing with generosity and kindness, courage and resilience, tranquility and peace.
Wahiguru, may Vancouver be a model for the entire Canada by taking strong measures to curb crime, providing affordable housing, and unite the people of the city. Wahiguru, bless Mayor, Mayor Ken and his team to work hard for the betterment of the city.
After having seen much of this world, we can say there are few peoples more committed to justice than Vancouverites. It is upon the foundation of justice that social, economic, spiritual, and environmental wellbeing is built. The prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, peace and blessings be upon him, has said that a day of just leadership is better than 60 years of worship.
Now, as we conclude, itte in pace. Go in peace.
Remembering the words of Prophet Martin Luther King Jr., who says, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that."
May the one who makes peace in the heavens bring peace upon us, upon the city of Vancouver, and upon all the people of the earth.
May Wahiguru bless the whole world in positivity, peace, and harmony. In Sim's words, "You can't lose if you never give up." Wahiguru ji ka khalsaa, Wahiguru ji
We pray to Allah to continue blessing this beautiful city of Vancouver of ours with just and open-hearted leaders.
Thank you for your words, words of wisdom and your kind remarks. Now I recognize and welcome our mayor-elect, councillors, and councillors-elect who have joined us onstage. We have councillor Rebecca Bly. Councillor Christine Boyle. Councillor Adrian Carr. Councillor Lisa Dominado. Councillor Pete Fry. Councillor Sarah Kirby Young. Councillor-elect Mike Clasen. Councillor-elect Peter Meisner. Councillor-elect Brian Montague. And councillor-elect Lenny Zhu. I'd also take this time to recognize some special guests that we have in the audience with us today. We have members of parliament, the Honorable Hedy Fry, she's just over here. And Member of Parliament Talib Noor Mohammed. From our provincial legislative assembly, we have the Honorable George Chow. We have the Honorable Anne Kang, just down here in front. The Honorable Melanie Mark. And Parliamentary Secretary Brenda Bailey. I understand we also have with us councillor Charlene Alec, councillor from the Tsleil-Waututh Nation, and other councillors from Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh nations here as well. In attendance, we also have park board commissioners, school board trustees, members of the Vancouver Public Library, members of the police board, members of the BCE Councillor Corps, representatives from local post-secondary education institutions. And we also have in attendance members of the Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Executive Council as well. Please welcome everyone. For our honored guests and everyone here in the audience today, in attendance here today, again, thank you for being here. today, again, thank you for being here. This is a very significant moment for Vancouver. In 103 general elections that have been held in the last 136 years since the incorporation of the city of Vancouver in 1886, each time the newly-elected mayor and councillors take an oath of office and through that they are tasked with serving the citizens of Vancouver to the best of their abilities. And this time, for the first time, we have elected a person of colour, a person of Chinese descent. To be our mayor. You didn't let me get to the punchline. Today, we all play an important role in this ceremony by bearing witness to this act of commitment to our city. For the next four years, the mayor and the 10 councillors that you see before you will take on the responsibility of creating policies and conditions that will allow this tremendous city of Vancouver to grow, thrive and lead. They will play an integral role in how we understand and build on Vancouver's reputation and its strength that we continue to uphold, the reputation as one of the most diverse and creative and livable inclusive cities in the world. Each of these individuals also has a critical role to play as we confront Vancouver's housing challenges and we work to create a community that's sustainable, caring and full of opportunity for this generation and future ones as well. This presents a unique challenge that might unsettle some people, but it also produces an opportunity to be a city council that breaks through patterns of histories and traditions, of partisan histories and traditions, to find ways of learning and cooperating and taking action. The easy road is to slide into hyper-partisanship and old struggles resulting in delays. I've seen politics like this my whole life and I know how debilitating it can be both personally and politically. The harder road forward is to learn from each other and how to work together as much as possible. After 30-plus years of political activism and elected office, I've come to understand a few things that sound simple but aren't always easy to attain. First, seek what unites you while respecting your adversaries. Second, work in good faith for the greater good. I hope that both these things are present for you and will guide you as you begin or continue your work on the new city council. After all, you're here to serve the people of Vancouver and I have a hunch that if you work at it, that you'll find a way to find common ground. And when there isn't common ground, some goodwill to disagree respectfully and generously will go a long ways and make a difference. We have high hopes for this new city council. We cheer for you and our collective success and we wish you well. I now ask the Honorable Judge Derek Maugh to come to the podium to administer the oath of office for the mayor-elect.
Mayor-elect Sim, would you please come forward to take the oath of office? I, Ken Sim, do solemnly affirm that.
I, Ken Sim, solemnly affirm that.
I'm qualified to hold the office of mayor.
I'm qualified to hold the office of mayor.
For the city of Vancouver?
For the city of Vancouver.
To which I have been elected.
To which I've been elected.
I've complied with the provisions?
I've complied with the provisions.
Of the Vancouver Charter?
Of the Vancouver Charter.
In relation to my election?
In relation to my election.
To this office?
To this office.
I will abide by all rules?
I will abide by all rules.
Related to conflicts of interest?
Related to conflicts of interest.
Under the Vancouver Charter?
Under the Vancouver Charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity?
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make?
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make.
And the actions that I take?
And the actions that I take.
In the course of my duties?
In the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others?
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration?
I will, sorry, say that again?
I will demonstrate. That's okay.
All right.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration?
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will perform the duties of my office?
I will perform the duties of my office.
In accordance with the law?
In accordance with the law.
Thank you. Please come to the table and will sign the oath of office.
The Honorable Judge Derek Maugh will now administer the oath of office for councillors and councillors-elect.
Councillors and councillors-elect, would you please stand at your chairs? After you recite "I" together, please state your name one at a time, beginning with councillor-elect Meisner. I?
Peter Meisner.
Brian Montague.
Christine Boyle.
Lisa Dominado.
Adrian Carr.
Sarah Kirby Young.
Rebecca Bligh.
Pete Fry.
Mike Classen.
Lenny Zhu.
I'm qualified to hold the office of councillor?
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor.
For the city of Vancouver?
For the city of Vancouver.
To which I have been elected?
To which I have been elected.
I have complied with the provisions?
I have complied with the provisions.
Of the Vancouver Charter?
Of the Vancouver Charter.
In relation to my election?
In relation to my election.
To this office?
To this office.
I will abide by all rules?
I will abide by all rules.
Related to conflicts of interest?
Related to conflicts of interest.
Under the Vancouver Charter?
Under the Vancouver Charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity?
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make?
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make.
And the actions that I take?
And the actions that I take.
In the course of my duties?
In the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others?
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration?
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will perform the duties of my office?
I will perform the duties of my office.
In accordance with the law?
In accordance with the law.
Thank you for administering the oath of office. You may all take your seats. I will call on each one of you, one at a time, to receive your badge of office from the acting city clerk, Rosemary Heguera, and sign your oath of office at the table to your left. First, Adrian Carr. Next, Sarah Kirby Young. Lisa Dominado. Rebecca Bligh. Christine Boyle. Pete Fry. Brian Montague. Mike Classen. Peter Meisner. Lenny Zhu. Mayor and city councillors, please stand up. Honoured guests, please join me in welcoming the 2022 to 2026 mayor and city councillors for the city of Vancouver. I was asked to say all their names again, but I think by this time you all know who they are. So we do have the mayor, of course, he's now sworn in, and all the city councillors. So we will have the lion dancers now. Thank you so much to the Vancouver Police Lion Dance Team and congratulations to all members of Vancouver's new city council. Please, everyone, take your seats. It's now my pleasure to invite Mayor Ken Sim to the podium to deliver his inaugural address.
All right, thank you. Wow, that was actually really cool. Just getting rid of the staple here. So, thank you very much. It's just so great to see a bunch of old friends and new friends here today. It's just so great to see a bunch of old friends and new friends here today. Before we get started, I do want to acknowledge that we are hosting this afternoon's inauguration on the unceded territories of the Squamish, Swelitut, the Musqueam First Nations. And I really want to, from the bottom of my heart, thank them for their generosity and their hospitality. So, I don't know if you know this or not, but I am a hugger. So you can't lose if you never give up. So to all of the people that were, you know, in this room, for all the people in this room who were with me four years ago, Sarah, Rebecca, Lisa, and to all of you, thank you for not giving up on the promise that together we can build a better city in Vancouver. Now, the path to get here was long. One hundred and thirty-five years after the first Chinese head tax was paid just for the right to come here and work on building a railway, Vancouver has elected its first Chinese-Canadian mayor. Now, the history of this moment isn't lost on me, but the honour truly does go to those whose shoulders that I stand on. Douglas Jung, Tung Chan, I know he's not here, he's on vacation somewhere, but Tung Chan. Raymond Louis, Raymond's our emcee? How awesome is that? I can come over and give you a hug too, if you want, Raymond, but I already gave you two today, so... Yeah, later. Kerry Jeng, I've had great conversations with Kerry. David Lam. B.C. Lee. B.C. Lee was this amazing person who I got the opportunity to sit down with and chat, and he was so generous of spirit. He was a beautiful man. Art Lee, I remember my parents voting for Art Lee when I was a little kid. And Sophia Lung, thank you for paving the way. The honour also belongs to everyone in this room who shares the vision that we can build a more inclusive Vancouver. A Vancouver, you know, where our diverse lived experiences make us stronger. You can't lose if you never give up. And I swear to God, we actually didn't write this together. It's just, it's amazing how this is going to be so similar. As I look at the journey of the Chinese people in Vancouver, I do want to acknowledge the incredible friendship between the Chinese community and Indigenous peoples. There was a time, not too long ago, where Chinese people, people of Chinese descent, couldn't own land in Vancouver. During this time, the Musqueam First Nation, it was the Musqueam First Nation who stepped up and they leased farmland to people of Chinese descent so they can actually just grow their own food and build a better life. So today, I do want to acknowledge that we are here standing on your shoulders as well, so thank you. Now, we're going to rely on our deep-rooted friendship not only to overcome the painful history of the Chinese community during the last hundred and thirty-five years, but to embrace reconciliation and to acknowledge the injustice of the last four hundred years. Now, the path to reconciliation will be long and it will be hard, and there will be missteps, but it is achievable if we remember that you can't lose if you never give up. Now, I came to politics with a strong desire for change, a desire to do politics differently. It was born on the promise that decisions in government should not be made on the advice of polls, lobbyists, activists, or whatever was trending on Twitter at that day, but it should be made on the advice of parents and educators and scientists and healthcare providers and what's happening in community town halls and coffee shops and the occasional local pub. Now, the leadership that our city has gotten from Sarah, Rebecca, Lisa, Pete, Adrian, and Christine set the stage during the last term. And today, Mike Claussen, Peter Meisner, Lenny Zhou, Brian Montague, and myself, we're going to join a renewed team that's going to set the path for this next term. You can't... So we heard loud and clear that people want to change, and people, change in Vancouver is here. More than ever before, Vancouver continues to be challenged, but not because improving affordability, housing, safety, or the climate are impossible. The promise of Vancouver is challenged because our lack of commitment to overcome our differences with one another. The challenges that we face with the opioid crisis can only improve when our ability to work across the aisle improves. When we rise above partisanship and take the bold actions that need to be taken, when the liberties we take with each other for personal gain are cast aside for the sake of the public interest, only then will we make real change. So, I'm going to strive to be the mayor that unites our city. The pitfalls of partisanship must be cast aside when dealing with the challenges in front of us. Success can only be achieved if we are fearless in the face of potential failure. Now, I do want to thank Prime Minister Trudeau and Premier-designate Ebi for generously reaching out and sharing their common goals with me. Now, my message to the Prime Minister and the Premier-designate is very simple. I'm standing here in front of this whole crowd, humbly asking for your help. Vancouver needs your help more than ever before. We are experiencing one of our nation's greatest challenges and tragedies, and Vancouver alone cannot solve these challenges. But like many other times in the history of this great province and country, I know that if we work together, we can overcome whatever's thrown at us. Now, we are post-partisan on the challenges we're facing in our opioid and mental health crisis epidemic... Sorry, epidemic. In this battle, we are all Canadians, up against one of the greatest challenges our nation has ever seen. We must call into service the best and brightest in our country, and we have to put the entire weight of Canada behind this calling. Now, hope is the most powerful tool we will have in this fight. And I was reminded by a resident of the downtown east side, last week, when I was just walking through there, he said, "Hey, Ken, is that you?" Remember, you can't lose if you never give up." Where did that come from? But needless to say, that comment makes me smile from ear to ear, and it just confirmed what I've seen firsthand countless times. There is a powerful and resilient community in the downtown east side. Now, it's my love for our city that drives me to do what I do. I believe that our diversity of thoughts and lived experiences actually make us stronger. I do believe that we can unite our city again. I do believe that we can bring our best ideas to the table. And I do believe that if we all work together, we can reclaim our title as best city on the planet. Now, to Christine, Pete, and Adrian, oh, you're all there. I'm super excited that you're going to be our partners in this journey, and I so look forward to standing shoulder to shoulder with you, and the rest of us do as well, working with you to deal with the challenges that we have in front of us. Together, I know we can set a tone for cooperation on the hard things that need to be done, and together, we can show everyone and in the annals of history that in the midst of our greatest epidemic, Vancouverites were able to unite. Remember, we can't lose if we never give up. So, my mom and dad taught me something at a very young age, something that always stuck with me, and that was, no matter how tough things get, the only way you can lose is if you stop trying. You can't lose if you never give up. This is the message that my incredible wife Tina and I have worked so hard to instill in our four boys. Tina, are you there? Are you there somewhere? Please stand up. No, I'm just kidding, don't. I don't want to embarrass you, but if you want to stand up, you can. All right, stand up. Come on, please, stand up. Yeah, she's not standing. Tina, you're an incredible mother and partner, evidently a really good sport. And I literally have no idea why you chose me, but I'll take it for the win. Seriously, you rock. Now, I do want to make a final comment, or take a final moment to thank everyone in the city for your confidence in us, and to all of those who did the small things and the big things to deliver this election victory to us. Let's unite once again and do the great things that must be done. Let's embrace the fact that our journey is going to be really hard. Let's acknowledge that some things are actually going to get more challenging before they get better. Let's be comfortable playing in a space where we will not have simple or easy answers. Let's have the courage to make mistakes along the way. Let's celebrate the false starts, the inevitable false starts that will happen, and let's not be afraid to fail, because you know what? Building something amazing, it's messy and it takes a lot of courage. And remember, we can't lose if we never give up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Sim. And thanks to all of you for joining us today in the inauguration of Vancouver's mayor and city council. A few words of special thanks to the Honourable Judge Derek Ma, Andy Greenwood and the Vancouver Fire and Rescue Service Band, Departmental Sergeant Major Ray Gardner, Piper Major Cal Davis, Vancouver Police Department Honour Guard, Vancouver and Fire and Rescue Service Honour Guard, Vancouver Police Lion Dance and its sister club Shaolin Hongga Gongfu Association, Vancouver Civic Theatres for allowing us to use the Orpheum today for today's proceedings, and the Britannia Community Centre for providing transportation to mayor and council. We are nearing the end of the formal proceeding of today's inaugural ceremony. Please join us in the lobby for light refreshments and meet the newly-elected mayor and council after this. Please remain in your seats until Mayor Sim and Vancouver City Councillors and our platform party has left the auditorium, at which time the swearing-in ceremony will be complete. Honoured guests, please rise, if you're able. Departmental Sergeant Major Ray Gardner, please prepare the procession. And Mayor Sim, please lead the procession offstage.